It's 10:00 AM, 12th day of November 2014. Called the County Commission meeting to order. Ask that you please stand for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge.
I put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Diane?
This morning we have eight donations, $2,000.98 in sixty-two cents to action to 2013-14, judiciary orders as of November 12, minutes for October 15. Vouchers General County Fund, $284,056290. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $28,82659. Coal Severance Fund, $27,88087. Kent Muffley, $89721. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,037788. Chestnut Ridge Park Purchasing Card, $48306. Assessors' Valuation Fund, $1,0051840. Assessors' Purchasing Card, $15360. Home Confinement, $270. Nine One One Cash, $1,0013145. Mon General Tiff, $119,12572. Star City Tiff, $10214389. University Town Center Tiff, $270,13491. Total, $840,506.48.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion for approval on the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Renetta?
Items for reimbursement today. First is the DUI grant for October 2014. This is starting a new cycle, the DUI grant, $7,046.36. As part of the DUI grant, all of those are issued by the Governor's Highway Safety Program. We also have several other grants under the Governor's Highway Safety Program. None of those sections had activity in the month of October, but we are required to submit a zero report, so I have several of those. That's all the reimbursements I have.
Move to approve the reimbursements.
Second?
I have a motion in the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
The Community Development Block Grant through the city of Morgantown that we partner with M.A.Y.S.P. on, they have come back and asked, not asked, they are telling us that they are revising our grant to account for overpayment last year, for whatever reason that happened, I don't know.
They overpaid?
Yeah, they paid too much, so they're reducing this year's allotment to account for the overpayment. They're reducing it by $301. So they're changing our grant award to $11,00649. So they're just asking for a new funding agreement to be signed.
That's a silly one.
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second?
I have a motion for approval in the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Thank you. Is Mike Dethorn, Don Dethorn here?
Yes.
Okay. Can we proceed? You're not scheduled until 10:15, but if you're here, we can go ahead and proceed.
Works just fine.
Okay. You got, you have the floor.
Great. Just here for pancreatic cancer awareness and proclamation declaring Mon County Pancreatic Care, sorry, Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Declaring the month of November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Monongalia County, West Virginia, whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 39,590 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year survival rate and the single digits at just 6 percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it's generally late stage and 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients, excuse me, die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 1,197 people were diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in West Virginia in 2014, and approximately 42 people in Monongalia County. Whereas the Rakhousikin Cancer Research Act, which was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework for strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction of guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Monongalia County, the nation by, through a comprehensive approach that include public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, its affiliates in West Virginia support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who've lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Monongalia County are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer, of research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, it be resolved that the Monongalia County Commission designate the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Mon County. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the proclamation as well.
Second?
I have a motion in the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the benefit of us, really appreciate it. Thanks for, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Great. Come on, more?
We're going to sign this.
Really appreciate it. Thank you all for supporting. Really appreciate it.
Sign later for us. Oh, okay. I'll sign that one. We'll do that. He signs it.
Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you all. Appreciate your support.
Sure. Thank you. My mom passed away from cancer, so.
I thought so. I was trying to remember, was your mother or your father?
Yes. Yeah, in fact, also, power voice.
Yes.
So, you know, so they were, yeah, so we've been, practice, I'm really glad you're doing this.
Absolutely. We're trying to do a lot of things around the state and the region, so we appreciate everybody's support.
Well, we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a couple of public hearings, but the first one's not scheduled to 10:30, and we really shouldn't start before that scheduled time. So why don't we move ahead to correspondence, and we'll get some of these other matters out of the way.
I have a letter from BBNT, and this is saying that as a depository institution, we're required to secure any uninsured deposits which are considered to be publicly funded. In the past, we have pledged securities with a safekeeping agent to cover your uninsured deposits. However, due to changes in FDIC insurance and/or decreases in your deposits, value of the securities pledged now exceeds the amount required to secure. So they're just reducing our securities by $70,000, which they're still covering everything that we have in there. Just approve that.
Move to approve the release of security for BBNT.
Second?
I have a motion in the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next, I have a letter from Tom Ammon with Steptown Johnson. This is presenting an engagement letter for Steptown Johnson to continue to handle the Star City Tiff for the commission. For your signature.
Good. Good. How's a good move for approval?
I have a motion for approval in the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And last, I have the Public Service Commission of West Virginia has approved the boundary changes for the Little Creek PSD. This is what we had a public hearing on several months ago, but it went through the process and they've now approved it. Doesn't require any action, just for your knowledge.
Oh, okay. Doesn't require any action from us. Any unfinished business?
No.
Any new business? Any monkey business? Well, we'll move on to reports from elected officials. Mayor, have anything from?
I'm done today, Bill. regret saying, dang, your hair looks nice.
Thank you.
Anything from Assessor's office?
This is a report.
Okay. I think that's all the elected official. Department supervisor, Diane, anything else?
No.
Bobby? Renetta? Chamby?
I'm just talking.
Rich, you have anything besides the public hearings?
I can give a quick update on where we are with the subdivision rights.
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good.
We, we had, after we received the commission's letter, the planning commission had work sessions and virtually went through the document, section by section, page by page. We've gotten to the, what I refer as the technical engineering sections, a lot of those standards and that. It was felt that we should have a meeting with the engineers and, or some representative from the engineering community, because Patty and our planners were not engineers, and most of those sections are roads and sanitary and stormwater, and all of those sections are basically engineering sections. That happened basically the second day after I ended up in the hospital. So I wasn't able to make that meeting, but one of the planning commission members, Michael Mills, conducted the meeting and had recordings. Well, he was having difficulty, technical difficulty, if you will, getting those recordings to me. I got them last try, so I can hear what that is. So we've essentially rewrote the first, say, two-thirds with all of the recommendations that we've come up at the various work sessions of planning commission. I'm ready to essentially send that out. I had to hear those engineering reports and see what we have there. One of the suggestions at the last planning commission meeting, we have our planning commission meeting tonight, was that we do a contract with one of the local engineering firms, relatively small amount of contract, to essentially review those engineering specifications. And we had enough in our budget for contract services that we could do that, unless it, you know, they came back and said, well, it'll be $15,000 or something like that. We anticipated would not be that extensive. And so we're considering that, but we, I really hope to have within the next week or so, barring anything unusual, a revised draft to go back to the planning commission, to go to the committee commission and see, see what we've done. We have condensed it quite a bit. We have made it so that for a smaller number of plots, we'd have very limited requirements under the ordinance, so we changed that. And there's been some technical corrections, if you will, that we've noticed as we went through, and I don't want to make it sound like we've thrown the baby out with bathwater, but we have reduced some of the requirements in there and done that. The only other question is, I have received a letter from you guys concerning the overlay district that they're talking about, the airport. Do you have any questions on that?
Well, yeah, I do have some questions on that. Glenn Kelly talked to me on the phone, and I wanted to talk with you before I talked to him some more and followed up with this. He's, based on what he said, he seemed to believe that even without zoning in those areas, because of FFA requirements, we could put certain requirements on there by the county. Are you familiar with that?
That, that did come up, or I had raised that question with Jackie before she retired, and we had our initial meetings, and I suggested, well, if they do this around the country, maybe there's something under, say, the section on airports or airport authorities or something like that that other ones use. Now, my understanding is nobody else, none of the other airports in the state have done this. So it's at least possible that there's some legislation that allows airport authorities, the jurisdiction, to do something like that.
Absolutely.
But, you know, overlay districts are a common technique used in combination with zoning ordinance. Sometimes your downtown district is done that way, historic districts are sometimes done that way. It's not an uncommon tool, but I've never heard of where you would put an overlay district on a place where you had no zoning district to overlay, and that was the problem that I was having. Now, the other thing, and I haven't seen what the city is coming up with, but I did see the document from the FAA and what they say that could be allowed in those areas, very, very limited, almost no structures. So it raises in my mind how you get around the taking issue. The taking issue is essentially, you, you can allow, say to somebody, well, you can't do anything you want with property, but you still have to leave them something to do with their property.
Right, it's cows, but you can't build a structure on it. Next, that's taking.
And, and when you limit any sort of potential development of that land, that's essentially considered taking, in which case, if the government's opposing this, they have to pay for a market value for that property. You can't just do that. So I'm not exactly sure what the limitations they're coming up with are, and I'm not sure if it meets what I saw, and I only had a chance to skim it, so I haven't got that document, or Jackie had that. But based on that, there was very little that you could actually build there. You basically have agricultural uses, but you couldn't put a house or any kind of structure on that, which would make sense if you're trying to prevent aircraft, but that sounds awful lot like taking to me from a land use point of view.
Do you know where he's at now with that? Because I heard him on the radio a few days back, and it sounded like they're trying to move forward with it, but they need to involve us if they want to.
They, well, what they're moving forward, and I have no firsthand knowledge, the last I talked with Jackie on this was like in July, and she indicated their consultant and lawyer, attorney were doing all of this, and we didn't have to do anything, they'd just give it back to us whenever it was done. But based on articles I've seen in the paper, they're moving forward with an overlay district for what's in their zoning ordinance, which, if you look at the airport, it's basically the one end of the runway. Our end is the other end, and that's the other problem. The other end already has commercial development, major housing complexes. It's, it's effectively built up, except for the ravine running through there. So I'm not sure, even if we have some legal mechanism to put this kind of thing in place, what practical advantage it's going to be. And unfortunately, that's where the planes come in, but where you're coming in is bigger area that they want designated than where they're taking off, which I'm not, you know, I have to assume that's something to do with how airports operate, but.
The winds. The winds determine where you take off.
It's a bigger, well, no, I understand that, but I don't know why. It would seem to me there's just as much risk of a plane coming down taking off as there is coming in for landing, but apparently they want a bigger area coming in.
I used to fly, actually, that's not the case. You had more trouble taking off.
But, but now, from, from my involvement, the planning commission's involvement, we simply had, received the letter that they were interested in doing this, that they sent to you, and we got a copy of it, and I never heard anything from them until about July, and I had two, two meetings where I basically explained the situation. Well, you can't do an overlay where you don't have an area that's already set. And then I got the call saying, well, you don't have to do anything more on, you know, our consultant and attorney.
Okay, that's, that's, because, because he told me when you were, when you were ill, so I didn't want to bother you to do that better. But your understanding now is that they're just gonna?
Well, my understanding.
Go proceed with what they're doing.
Yeah, my understanding is with, at least what I've seen in the paper, is that they're moving forward that overlay district, which they could do for theirs, because all of their land is set. But I have yet to see any documentation on that or anything asking what we could do. And again, maybe they have some, some section of code, again, under airport authorities or something else, that would give us an ability to implement that short of 8A. But there's, there's no way that I know of that you can put an overlay district when you don't have an underlying zoning ordinance.
We'll just wait and see.
So the timeframe on the subdivision regulations, what are we looking at?
I'm hoping to have the revised draft ready for approval by the planning commission at the next meeting. Now, again, that's going to relay somewhat on these technical engineering things. I could guarantee that I'd have that ready for the next one, based on the revisions that the planning commission have done. What I'm not sure is how long it might take for that. But that's what I'd like to do, is have that for the, for the next planning commission to make it through it. Then we have to send it to Phil and have him check it out from a legal point of view and.
They are getting close to it.
Oh, we're definitely close, but understand that after, you know, when I had that document in June, we have essentially redid that whole document, and we were meeting basically every week, every other week, all through July, August, and September, going through it, literally piece by piece by piece.
Thank you, Rich. We still have about six minutes. Let me go to any comments from the public. If there are comments in regards to the public hearings, please hold those till we get into the public hearings. But any member of the public has a comment about anything other than the two public hearings. If you want to be recognized, all you need to do is stand, and we'll recognize you, and you can say whatever you want to say. No, this is good.
Oh, wow, there we go.
I'm leaving. No meeting next week, is that correct?
No meeting next week, that's correct.
See you guys.
Well, we still have five minutes. County Commissioners, anything you want to talk about before the public hearing?
Sure, I have three things. I think three things, yeah. First, Diane, if you could, I saw the assessor's office left. Could we just request to find out when we're going to have our assessors' report? We were, I was hoping, I'll have it this way, are we going to have our assessors' report concerning the situation we have requested by the end of the month? And that was concerning the private-public situation, because we have less than now six weeks to make a decision. We have to make a decision before January 1st. So I'm asking that we could have an update, if not a final report, so then we could then put it on the committee, committee of the whole, put it on a work session. So that way we can move forward on that one. The second thing is that I will say now that at the end of the meeting, I will be asking for an emergency executive session pursuant 6-9A-4B, Section 9, under commercial competition, but I'll wait and do that till afterwards, but I didn't want to publicly state that. And then the third thing is, I was hoping with the end of the election that the county would be able to move forward in a positive manner. However, Sunday's letter to the editor was a total embarrassment, I felt, for the entire Monongalia County community. To criticize the county commission for trying to find a warning center for the less fortunate who are homeless clearly shows how little class that person has. We will continue to represent all the citizens with, without discrimination in this county, and I wanted to make that perfectly clear. Thank you.
Yeah, anything? Still have four minutes.
Well, one of the, one of the things that stirs me is the angry, people are so angry and hateful, and it's so sad, because that's what our country is not based on. You hear the day after Veterans Day, being a veteran myself, the day after Veterans Day, we really need to recognize and thank all the, all the men and women currently, and our ancestors and generations before us that made our freedoms possible. I take great, great pride in the fact that I was able to serve my country, and I know a lot of people take pride in that. A lot of people, we were, we were able on Monday to go into the senior, Senator Tom and I, and they asked me to not only deliver some words to the veterans, but also lead them in a pledge and a prayer, which was a, was a moving experience myself. I lost, I lost close friends in the military, and every Veterans Day, I think of those, think of those people. The, I am, I am hopeful that moving forward, that people can vent their anger and still stand for our constitution and our laws. You've got to be committed to our laws, to carry out our laws, and that's, and if you don't understand them, then you need to have someone that does. It's just that simple. But the, Monongalia, being a commissioner is the only job, the only job in the local, state, and federal government where you're, and I've said this thousands of times, and I had to preach this to Tom when Tom came on. I mean, it has nothing to do with, with anyone other than the way it's set up. We are the only official that has judiciary responsibilities, legislative responsibilities, and executive responsibilities, none of which we have individually. We only have them as a group, and we have, we're still trying to clean up a lot of messes from commissioners that didn't follow that. There's things that are hanging out there that's a mess. That's the way it's set up, this meeting right here. I call it an oddball. Job is an oddball job. There's no other job like it at any level of government. It's a wonderful job, I enjoy it, but it's a tough job, and it's a job that, that for whatever reason, they didn't want to trust in one person, they wanted to spread it between three people. So it takes three people to make this, make this county and this commission work. So I'd just like to keep in mind this entire week, the people that sacrificed their lives, people that sacrificed their time and their effort to make, make. That's the way it's set up, this meeting right here. I call it an oddball. Job is an oddball job. There's no other job like it at any level of government. It's a wonderful job, I enjoy it, but it's a tough job. And it's a job that, that for whatever reason, they didn't want to trust in one person. They wanted to spread it between three people. So it takes three people to make this, uh, make this county and this commission work. So, uh, I'd just like to keep in mind this entire week, the people that sacrificed their lives, people that sacrificed their time and their effort to make, uh, make us able to enjoy the fruits of a free land.
It's 10:30. So I think we can move to our first public hearing. And let me just give you some basic guidelines here. What we're going to do is we're going to have a staff report. Rich Wood will give that. And then what we'll do is we'll give those individuals who are in favor of the proposal to speak. And then after they speak, those individuals who are opposed to the proposal to speak. And then during that process, the commission may have questions. Any commissioner can ask you a question if, if you speak for clarity of what you may be saying or the point you may be making. But which one are we going first with here, Rich?
Uh, the one on Chestnut, that's O-01.
Merrimont? Okay. So we'll open the public hearing at this time. Rich, you have the floor.
Okay, you have, in your position, copies of the application, copies of the staff report, resolution from the planning commission. What you have is you have a piece of property that is zoned R3, that's adjacent to an R4 apartment complex. The owner of that apartment complex would like to buy that property and expand his apartment complex. So it's essentially, would be a continuation by one lot of the R4. The planning commission recommended approval to this body. We have not received any comments since the public hearing. The planning commission held based on the notice for the county commission. Any questions?
I'll wait till I hear the standing before I...
Okay, anyone wishing, wishing to speak in favor of this proposal, if you'll raise your hand and ask you to please stand and state your name and your address for the record? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good, my name's Paul Keener. I live at 2024 Glenmark Avenue, and I'm the owner of Merrimont Properties LLC with my sister. We've owned the properties for 15 years and during the, actually, we had Mr. Penyon, he passed away in 2005, and we approached him when he passed away, but Sam is the estate executor of the estate. So he had come to us a couple of months ago and said, hey, I'd like to sell the property. And currently, under the old zoning, it's R3, which is medium density, which would allow you to do so many units per acre. It's only .46 acres. What we're proposing to do is something that, similar to what we're doing right now. We're the current owners, we own close to three acres there now, and all we're going to do is continue, you know, the complex right there. Nothing right away, but, you know, just in the future, we, we just want to get all our ducks in a row before we start planning our properties and stuff. And, you know, we didn't have any resistance at the meeting, you know, really, all the people were in favor, but they just didn't want to open a can of worms because there's a subdivision across the street and there's some ordering properties across from us that, you know, they were in fear of that. So they just didn't want, wanted to get it and everybody else to trickle down. So, you know, we didn't, I mean, we're owners, we're hands-on, and basically, we rent to basically all professional new undergrads, and, you know, it's working people, and, you know, we don't have any problems with any of the, you know, our tenants or anything, so... But that's our proposal, and I'm in favor because I'm right next door. It's rather me than somebody else to do it, so, I mean, I know what kind of operation we run and, you know, that's the thing I'm here for.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No.
Anyone opposed, or is there any more, anyone in addition to Mr. Keener that's in favor of it, that wants to speak? Anyone opposed to the proposal who would like to speak? There being no further comments. Do you have any questions, Tom, or discussion, or any?
My only question in reviewing, um, you know, I see there were some comments, the Limwood Road Association was against it due to proximity. But basically, all you're saying is you're extending what you have now to these new properties.
Yes, correct.
So what, what are you surrounded by? When you, at the end of this new property, what would be then next? I could ask you or Rich, what would then be next to that?
There's an old house which has five units in it, they've subdivided, so there's rental property next to that.
So it's rental property next to it?
Then next to that is highway, commercial.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't going in right into a neighborhood. That's fine, that's all I wanted to know.
Anyone make sure I'm... This is the one next to it, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And this one is the bottom corner, it's the one that you changed.
Yeah, that, correct.
Requesting change.
Correct.
Do you, do we, can we act on it now?
You, you want us to act on this, Rich, now?
Well, you need to close the public hearing, and then you can take action. Technically, you have 45 days to take action, but typically, you go ahead and, unless there's some issues, you would go ahead and approve it or deny it now.
This is, this is another question probably for Rich, but Rich to answer. One of the things that I've noticed on this, we've talked about this before, but I always like to have it on the record of each public hearing as to the process and procedure because we often get calls on that. I noticed that in this change, you, for some reason, you got that yellow jutting in that whole area there. That change, you can come up closer if you, so you can see what I'm talking about. I think I ask you this in every public hearing, but I think the public that is present is entitled to know the answer. Now, you're, you're changing this to red, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Why, why wouldn't the planning commission, since this juts in here like that, just have the authority, just go ahead and change that and make that line straight across it?
Because we cannot arbitrarily change the map. First of all, planning commission can't change the map. You would have to change the map. Now, one of the things that we're working on...
You can speak that way, I know, I know the answer, I just want it to be part of the record.
Yeah, one of the things that we're working on is some math amendments where, you know, it doesn't make any sense for that R3 to now go into what essentially is a commercial development. We had a situation on Maple Avenue where with the change with the hospital and all of that, you have essentially a strip of high-density running through a commercial area. So we're trying to make some of those corrections when we redo the entire ordinance and we'll work on some of those sections of the map so we can do that. But that is essentially a revision and under that authority. The only way that you can do it at this point, short of a revision to the ordinance and the map, is by petition by the property owner. So if the property owner there wanted to do that, we could do that. But at the planning commission, can't go ahead and just do that. In fact, the county commission can't just go ahead and do that.
That was, that was important, that you explained that because that is, that addresses the objection that the statement, the, the party that objected, the single party that objected is, their concern was it was going to create a domino effect. You do this one, and then you're automatically going to do this one, this one, this one, this one, this one. And that's why it's important to get on the record and people understand that just because this one is being done, we can't just arbitrarily start adding, do next, 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 next. People have to petition and we have to have a public hearing and everything step by step.
One of the things that came up at the planning commission, and, and one of the commissioners basically poised that posed that same question, is that each individual case comes before the planning commission and are decided on the merits of that case. So it's not like court of law where it's setting precedents and so you come back and say, but you did it for this one. The circumstances can be different in each individual case, and each individual case has to be judged on its own merit. Now, some of the ones, for example, that were at the meeting, asked about possibly rezoning their R3 areas back down to R1. And we said, yes, you could do that, and they may ultimately come in and want to do that. I don't know if they will or not, but that's a possibility. Most people tend to think that the rezonings go up in intensity of use. That's not always the case, they can go down in intensity of use as well. Want to answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you very much. I, it's a good public service to make sure people understand how it works.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I move to close the public hearing. And a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Public hearing is closed. So gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Is the floor is open for a motion if you want to make it?
Sure, I move to support the recommended approval, the resolution recommended approval by the planning commission to move it from an R3 to a R4.
I'd move to, to approve it.
I have a motion...
I'm sorry, I second. I don't know why I did that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, suppose. It is approved. We've got four minutes for the next one. Everybody's getting ready for winter, temperatures are going to drop.
Snow in the mountains.
Snow in the mountains.
Snow here tomorrow.
Possible, possible. It'll definitely be cold enough overnight this summer. But if we get the precipitation out that's supposed to...
I was just going to say, how are you feeling? Since I'm...
Much better, much better.
Things going better, okay.
It was completely unexpected, it was very painful, but as I mentioned, some people, that was the first time I ever went to a hospital.
Oh, really?
So it was a whole new experience, but it's...
I was there for you.
It's something I had to keep aware of now, so...
Good, well, I'm glad that you're feeling better.
But it was not very pleasant, it was wild, and it was very unexpected.
And we're down two minutes.
One of the things you might consider is, we always put ours, our wording as the, the public hearing will start at 6:00 or as soon as possible thereafter. So, uh, give you a little winkle room case...
Yeah, so as all parties would arrive or something, that might be something, yeah.
No, you can have a couple more minutes of sound meditation. Not that we don't all need it, but...
I guess we should also extend that, extend that condolences.
We got Dave Doherty here from the Development Authority. Maybe you ask him for a report from the Development Authority. They put you on, so I usually put me on this part.
I like to do that when I can. You know, the Development Authority is moving right ahead with the road going to the readiness center and on around. So there's one issue that I think the Development Authority has been promoting, and that is the extension of the runway. That would help the university, of course, and other public transportation issues. I remember Governor Casey of Pennsylvania told us one time that transportation is the engine of economic development, and I think that's, that's very, very true. And so it was the Development Authority's efforts that brought the Mont Valley Expressway from Union Town to the Sheet Lake area. I remember that Glenn Walker was our president, and we had a report from the chairman of the Mont Valley Expressway Association, and Mr., can't remember his name now, but Tom, Mr. Loeb was his name. And he's a talk show host on KDK TV or radio, I think. And after his report, Mr. Walker said, well, gentlemen, thank you for your fine report, we'll take it under consideration. And he was ready to dismiss them, and I said, well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion if we get on board. It's a very important project, and I think we need to do it now. And John Miller was from the city of Moreytown, he was representing for the city at the time. He said, I'll second Dave's motion because I agree it's a very important issue. So after that, then I was appointed to the executive committee of the expressway task force, and as a result, that project is finished.
Good, good.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, it's, we've arrived at 10:45 a.m. For our next public hearing, we'll have the same format. Rich Wood will give a staff report. Then we will give those who want to speak in favor of the request to stand, give your name and address. And then we will move to those who are opposed to it and ask you to please stand and give your name and address. Rich?
Okay, we have, the same documentation has been forwarded to the planning commission, the application, supporting documentation, the staff report, and the resolution from the planning commission. It was the planning commission's recommendation on this one for approval of the rezoning. This is on Maple Avenue. Commissioner Bloom would not be aware, both of you were on the commission, I believe, when it was rezoned from C1 to R4, and this was actually the first map amendment we, we ever had. And now for this particular parcel, they want to rezone it back to C1. It would not be spot zoning because there is C1 across the road from that, so it essentially gets hooked into that C1 as far as spot zoning concerns or things like that. But anyway, the recommendation of the planning commission was for approval by the county commission. Any questions?
My question is, under the mine county planning commission minutes, October 8th, it said that the staff recommended denial?
Yes.
So the staff was against it?
Staff was against it. The reason the staff...
Could you explain that?
Yeah, the reason the staff took the position against it was from a planning, sort of planning code, planning perspective, you want to move towards conformity against non-conformity. One of the reasons that that was rezoned to R4 was because you had essentially high-density residential throughout that area. You had two non-conforming uses on either side of this parcel. One was an office complex, one was a light industrial complex. So that by rezoning to the R4, you moved it more in conformity, as is the case with much of the western planning district. It was developed before the rezoning, so you have areas where it's almost a pickup.
Right.
Because there's so many conflicting land uses. But it was felt that, that the original rezoning moved it towards conformity, whereas now moving this one parcel, that C1, reduced the conformity of that particular area. Now, from the planning commission's point of view, they felt that, and one of the, one of the grounds for changing the zoning ordinance is changes in economic conditions. They felt with the development that was going down, down at Mont General Hospital, that the overall economic conditions of this area were changing, and that was why they voted to approve.
Okay, thanks, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, is that it, Rich?
Yes. Unless you have any more questions?
Um, any questions for Rich?
Remind, remind me, I remember that, I remember that, that time. I guess I'm a little confused. Why are we flipping it back and forth? And maybe, maybe you can't answer that, maybe Sam's going to have to answer that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the applicant would have to say, it's, it's all based on application. Just the conversation we had before, we can initiate this, has to be done. Even if it's the worst idea in the world or the best idea in the world, it has to come by application due to the planning commission and go through this process. We don't, we don't have a choice in saying, oh, that's a great idea, we'll just go ahead and do it, or that's the worst idea we have heard of, don't do it. They apply, we have to process it.
And, and the, the other question I had related to that was, the, well, at the time the planning commission heard this, were they, were they briefed on the improvements that's going to be made by the Mont General Hospital tip to the Maple Drive?
At that point in time, I think they were aware of the roads, of the road that was going in, that was all going in at the time, and those improvements, some of the improvements undergoing inside General Hospital and that. I do not believe that the idea where they're building the three large medical office complexes and that... I do not believe that the idea where they're building the three large medical office complexes, that, no one was aware of that at that point in time.
And the planned expansion.
And that is right out essentially the corner of Maple Drive.
Yeah, and the planned expansion, expansion of Maple Drive now.
Yeah, there was no, there was no, nothing that we knew that they were looking at widening at that particular time.
Now, based on that, would the staff still be of the same opinion?
Well, the staff was...
With the planned changes?
Yeah, yeah. They, we took those into consideration. And again, ours is from essentially a planning principle. When you have mixed uses, you want to move more to conformity and away from non-conformity. Now, what you could argue is, well, the one, the one non-conforming use right now, the office building, if it was included in the rezon, which it is not, would move to conformity. The light industrial is never going to be in conformity unless it's zoned in light industrial or industrial, and that's not going to happen in that location.
Good, thank you.
So I just wanted to make sure for clarity, the change of the position of the Planning Commission was for economic reasons?
That was, that was what the Planning Commission members who voted for thought that the overall economic condition had changed from when they originally voted for R4 to now to recommend C1.
Okay, thank you. All those who would like to speak in favor of the proposal, if you'll stand and state your name and address, and you'll have the opportunity to speak your piece.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Sam Bossia. I'm a commercial real estate agent with Propolis and Associates. I represent Paul Gabriel, the gentleman that is, wants to purchase the property at Maple Drive. I have quite a bit of knowledge about the property. I represented it when I was with the former, my former employer, Howard Hannah. I had it listed for about three years. The, I do know why that was changed, okay? It shouldn't have been changed. It was changed because the, you know, I don't like doing this, but I will because it's the truth. And I've got the evidence to show that it's the truth. The gentleman that bought the property behind it bought it from a relative of the lady that owns, Mrs. Bland, that currently owns the property. It's a good way, if you change it from commercial to residential. As a matter of fact, we have the appraisal right now, and it's about 40% less as residential than it would be commercial. And it was done, I think maliciously. I don't think Mrs. Bland was given full, even though she went along with it, she was given full knowledge of what she was doing. It shouldn't have been done in the first place, okay? If you look at that area, when you talk about, you know, right across the street is Mr., is the hardware store, I'm sorry.
Ace Hardware.
Ace Hardware.
Ace Hardware.
Next to it is, is a light industrial, okay? And Lisa Martis, who will be speaking, she speaks more toward the professional part of zoning, has some pictures that we took, and as a matter of fact, we took them at the, for the, for the meeting before the board, and the place has changed. It changes every, every day, okay? Mr. Gabriel, as everybody knows, is a former owner of Gabriel Brothers, is now getting into, into businesses. What he intends to do there will be conformed to the area. As a matter of fact, he'll have to go before the zoning commission again for anything he might do, okay? Which means green space, parking, and everything. So we're just trying to correct something that shouldn't have been done in the first place. And if you have any questions for me, that's fine. Lisa will probably speak next, and again, from a technical standpoint, she will have more information.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Not yet.
Next?
Hi, Lisa Martis, Project Management Services, 160 Fayett Street. I do have some updated photos that was taken yesterday. If I could pass those out. Thank you. I'm also representing Paul Gabriel, and as stated, we are requesting a map amendment from R4 High Density Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial for property located at 1053 Maple Drive. The purpose of the R4 High Density Residential is to provide for apartment, townhouse, condominium, and other high-density residential uses such as assisted living facilities. Land uses permitted conditionally include daycare or nursery school, dog parks, training centers for adults in transient shelters. The purpose of the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District is to provide for the business and commercial needs of the residential district served. Freight uses include professional offices, personal services, and small retail. Both districts permit similar uses conditionally. While zoning map amendments requests were usually evaluated on their land use merits, it imperative to note that the vicinity has undergone economic changes since the rezon in 2011. The Montegaya County, I'm sorry, excuse me, the Montegaya Health System development that is currently under construction on Maple Drive is, is driving the area to change the built environment to commercial. Likewise, the high-density residential construction assessable from Route 705 is further pushing demand for continued commercial growth. By extending the C1 zoning district across Maple Drive, we are supplying the highest and best use for the property and vicinity. According to the comprehensive plan, multifamily developments require large lots. This lot is approximately 28,000 square feet, not large in terms of multifamily development. The property is also not large enough for large-scale commercial development, but rather a small-scale neighborhood commercial development offering goods and services to the vicinity residents. As stated in the staff report, this is not spot zoning. With my experience in urban planning, I would argue that the adjacent properties on Maple Drive, since they are legal pre-existing non-conforming structures, would also be better served in a C1 district. In closing, the current underutilized property should be C1, which would serve the general public and area residents more efficiently than high-density residential. But having small-scale commercial or professional offices, it would offer the residents the ability to walk instead of being automobile-dependent. Any new development that will, any new development will be required to take into consideration issues that may arise, such as light pollution, stormwater retention, and other mud-related requirements. Commercial or professional offices flank the moderately traveled corridor buffering the multifamily residential from the thoroughfare. It is reasonably to believe, reasonable to believe that as the population of Morgantown, Montegaya County, and WVU continues to increase, the demand for goods and services located within close proximity of major thoroughfares will also continue to do the same.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. It's either for you, or Mr. Bossia, or for whoever. I live at 1219 Pineview Drive, so I agree with you. I mean, I've seen unbelievable growth out there. I have no problem changing C1. My question is, and I'm trying to visualize it, if you build, change to C1, how are you going to extend this, widen this road? I mean, I just don't understand where it's going to come from. I mean, there's got to be a need. You're definitely, I don't see a problem with that. I know we're reconsidering to widen the road. How are we going to do that? Am I allowed to ask that question?
Yeah.
I just was wondering. I mean, does anyone have an idea? I mean, I really don't know, because if you even look at it, you would think holes, but it's neat. I mean, it's clearly, that is, you can't put housing in that area.
No, no, you can't put housing, but it's a commercial building versus housing.
Yes.
I think you have a little bit more latitude of right-of-way.
Okay.
And, and things like that.
Well, and again, I know you can't speak for Mr. Gabriel, but do you think he would be a little more flexible with the right-of-way? Because we're going to have to widen that road. And you feel it'd be easier with doing it in a commercial than a residential?
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at the apartments that are being built now, those are over, I mean, you know, monstrosities. And listen, I'm a developer, so I, you know, Mr. Connor's a great guy, whatever, but, you know, that's what he has planned for the front, okay? So what difference would it make if it's his, well, I know the difference. It would take up more space than a commercial building.
Well, no, I have no problem. I just, I look forward to seeing the creative ideas you're going to come up with for it.
Well, and, and Mr. Gabriel does things correctly. He's already, you know, as you can tell, he's hired some good people to come in here and defend his case, as he will do with architects and engineers.
Okay. Well, no, I, I, I think your case is very, very clear. And that living out there, I just, I'm just amazed what they're able to do in such an area that I never thought would have been developed. That's it.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Just a single question, actually, to play off what Sam said previously. This, this whole widening and everything we've done with Mon General Hospital was our TIF, is one of our TIFs. And I'm a big believer in TIFs, if you, if they're used, and used properly. The, would you agree with what Mr. Bossia said, that by changing this to C1, that would increase the value of this property?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Do you have any idea about how much?
I do not. I, I am not a real estate agent or an appraiser, but...
Okay, that's why I'm sort of asking it to both of you.
Absolutely.
I wanted your separate opinion, but maybe he could give me, give me a value, because that increment is what we're paying for the widening of the road.
Right.
Do you have any ideas, Sam?
I, I do. There was an appraisal done, and it was done as commercial and residential. Can I make a phone call to Paul to see if I'm allowed to?
No, you don't have to, Lisa. No, that's all right. I, I pretty much have an idea what it would be.
It's substantial.
I, I, that's what I, that's good enough. I don't want you, I don't want you to disclose anything.
We don't need to know.
Interfere in my competition or anything.
Okay, anyone else speak in favor of the proposal? Okay, let's move to opposition to the proposal. Please stand, state your name and address, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Bush. I'm from the law firm of Bolt Rice here in Morgantown, and actually a resident of the West Run Planning District. So this affects me personally and professionally. Plans are put in place for a reason, and that's to avoid the flip-flop zoning. In 2011, this was rezoned to R4 as it would be in greater consistency with the West Run District plan. That plan was looked at in 2013, and that plan was amended and reaffirmed when looking at the R4 consideration for this piece of property. And so there has been development in the area, but it's with the, the planning and perspective in mind. And I come today to, to avoid any sort of emotional aspect I may have or others may have. I strictly want to express my opinion about what I believe are the legal insufficiencies in this case. And first, as, as the Commissioner pointed out, that the professional staff recommended denial in this case. And as an attorney, one of the greatest lessons I've learned is seek those out with the most experience. And in this case, the Planning Commission said from a planning perspective, they said the proposed map amendment is not consistent with the West Run comprehensive plan. They say the property will be surrounded on three sides by R4 zoning with a physical barrier of the road separating it from the nearby C1. The zone change in 2011 from C1 to R4 increased conformity with the majority of the structures on the site, and changing a portion of that area from R4 back to C1 creates an area of non-conformity. So the staff recommended denial in this case. Second, I believe the actual process of the amendment to the, to the recommendation of a C1 is inconsistent with state law. As, again, as the Commissioner pointed out in the minutes, there are statements made, and I just have a draft copy, I'll be honest with you, but in the draft copy of the minutes, there, they say that there was no discussion on the motion from the commission. And they further state...
This is in the minutes of the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, this is page two of the minutes. They say that the minutes reflect there's no discussion on the motion from the Planning Commission. There was a vote of the Planning Commission with no stated grounds, no legal foundation for why they were recommending this. And there was a dissenting vote by Mr. Giganbach from the president. And there are two ways to rezone on the West Run General Hall. One is a consistent purpose with the plan, and two is an inconsistent plan, or purpose with the plan. In this case, the consistency, I believe, is undeniable, that the professional staff came out and said, "This doesn't fit the plan." So now we're in the inconsistency box. If there's an inconsistent recommendation made with the current West Run plan, which again was amended and reaffirmed in 2013, there must be a major change in the area. That change must be unanticipated, and that change must cause substantial alteration to the basic characteristics of the area. So again, we're not sure which foundation the commission chose, and I think that's a problem, but I think under either circumstance, the amendment fails. It's not consistent because, and, and the reasons for changing and the inconsistency all fail. So again, back to the first point, there have to be major changes. Yes, there's development in this area, but that's development in a commercially zoned district. So there's development in a district that supports commercial development. This is an R4 district. Yes, there's development in this district in R4 housing, but that's because it's meant for R4 purposes. So just because there's thriving commercial activity in an adjacent commercial area is not a justification to change R4 area, which is thriving for R4 purposes, again with the mixed-use plan. Second, it's not unanticipated. Real estate changes don't happen in the blink of an eye, and they don't happen overnight. This plan was reaffirmed in 2013, and a lot of this was already going on. In addition, there is no substantial alteration. Again, the area of R4 is being used for R4 purposes, and the area for commercial is being used for commercial purposes. And last, I'll just touch on the issue of spot zoning. I believe from a legal perspective, it's questionable at best whether this is or is not spot zoning. We're talking about a single piece of property in the middle of an R4 district that's separated by a road from commercial district, and I believe the due process was not followed in this case. And so spot zoning, I think, is questionable at best. And the last, this is more from a factual standpoint. The statement has been made that, that there was possible coercion in 2011, or some sort of gray area around this rezoning. I look at the facts as I have them now, and I think that's how we make our decision. You'll see in the, in the Planning Commission, the staff report that there is a letter from the property owner supporting the change in zoning. And at this point in time, I think there's an argument on the other side as well, that just at the point that we might be having a real estate transaction where the property would be worth more, zone commercial, we should pursue zoning commercial. And so again, I'm not saying any of those are facts. I'm just saying that there's an argument on the other side that the change in zoning is fortuitous with regard to the real estate transaction. So for these reasons, because I believe that there are legal insufficiencies in this change, and to avoid flip-flop zoning and to maintain consistency with the plan, I would urge this commission to reject the recommendation to change the zoning.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
As I look at these pictures, and I hear you say that this proposed property sits in the middle of another zoning area, and I look at it and I see commercial buildings everywhere to the, to the left of this picture.
I'm sorry, I've not seen the pictures.
Well, my question is, I'm not sure it isn't mischaracterized by saying it sits in the middle, because you're bordered by commercial property.
Well, sir, I, when I say it sits in the middle, thank you. I'm referring to the photos provided by the planning staff, and forgive me, I have copies. If this isn't in your packet. This is the staff report. It outlines a, an area surrounding the home, which is in the, the direct middle of the R4 zone.
Just pass that this way.
Yes, absolutely. I have multiple copies here.
Now, I understand the narrative you're saying, but if you look at these pictures, maybe you need to look at these pictures, and if they are inaccurate pictures, tell us of the proposed property.
Sure.
I mean, I know photographs, photographs can tell you different things depending on where you take the picture.
I think I can, I can speak generally to the point that, yes, there are commercial districts around the, the piece of property we're talking about. And there's also an R4 district bigger than the piece of property we're talking about. So two points on that. One is that the, the piece of property that is considered for rezoning sits in the middle of a current, currently zoned R4 district. That R4 district does, is surrounded by other commercial areas. However, that goes back to the point that the purpose of a comprehensive plan is to create consistency and community purpose in the West Run District. And the purpose of a zoning ordinance is to implement that plan. When this plan was created, the zoning was put into place in 2011, and when the plan was reaffirmed in 2013, the plan meant for there to be commercial zones and there to be residential zones. And just because there is thriving commercial activity in a commercial zone, that's not a proper reason to change an R4 district that is thriving for residential purposes. So, so, yes, Commissioner, I do agree with you that there is an R4 zone surrounded on some sides by commercial zones. However, each has an independent purpose under the West Run plan.
Would, would you agree with the statement that when the Planning Commission denied this, this request, that the character of the lay of the land was different than it is now? And that's the reason for them changing their position?
Are you, are you referring to 2011?
Yes, their first decision, their first denial, and then their second reconsideration, is, was, is the lay of the land today different than what it was when they made their first decision?
Well, I didn't have the fortune of, of being in those conversations at that point in time, but I think it's, it's undeniable that there's been development. but I think it's, it's undeniable that there's been development in this area. But again, there's been development in the proper areas, I would say. And, and, and that's why we have to be rooted in the, in the plan. And the commission looked at this plan as recent as 2013 and was satisfied with the R4 zoning and the zoning scheme of the plan. And so, to the degree there's been change in circumstances, I, respectfully, I think it's not as important as the legal factors where that change has to be substantial, that change has to be unanticipated. And again, real estate transactions don't happen overnight, and I've not been in all the back rooms of the real estate deal, so I can't tell you with certainty what was known and what wasn't known. But I think what is true today is that there is a plan, and, and the plan is working as it was intended to.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any questions?
I, I would, I would actually ask for clarification.
Sure.
And I know you didn't mean it in a negative way, but, but just, just to make sure.
Yes, sir.
I, I am, I feel better that before Mr. Gabriel purchases this property, he's seeking a change and will probably compensate at the higher level. I'd be very upset if he came in after he bought it for a lower price and then came in and tried to get a change. I think, and I think your, I think your statement, and I don't remember exactly, but sort of let the, the impression that somehow that this was being done for some improper purpose.
Yes, sir, that's not what I mean.
I didn't think you meant, I didn't think you meant it that way, but I just wanted to clarify, because my first reaction was, well, no, why would, why would the buyer be in here wanting to make it worth more money?
Right, and, and I apologize if, if that message came across. My sole purpose was to say that there are multiple arguments to be made as far as the timing of this transaction.
I, I understood, but sometimes, you know, us in the word profession know that sometimes words can be taken out of context, and I just wanted you to be able to clarify that.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
You make an excellent, you know, counterpunch argument. This is probably the reason why I really dislike dealing with zoning issues when we came up with the comprehensive plan in Morgantown when I was on city council. But with saying that, when you start a plan, there's been so much change, and especially in Morgantown area. And I wrote down the two words. You said it had to meet some sort of specificity. And you said that the second word was by unanticipated or substantial...
Sure, there's, there's two ways. Let me clarify that.
Yeah, I want to just, read just that one, that second one.
Sure, the second one, if the purpose is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, there have to be three problems met. One, there has to be major changes in the area.
Okay.
Two, those changes have to be unanticipated. And three, those changes have to cause substantial alteration to the basic characteristics.
Right.
And forgive me, that's paraphrasing.
Oh, no, 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 I appreciate that, because that's what, you know, us layman people would rather you do the Cliff Notes version.
Sure.
So I look at the three, and, and I'm thinking, okay, I'm gonna have to come up with a reason to justify these three reasons as you're saying. And I'll tell you, I believe I can. There clearly is a major change, and the whole area with Mon General redeveloped and redesigned that whole area. The unanticipated, clearly above that now WVU Research Center has now decided that they're not gonna do that anymore. That changes the whole picture of that area. And is it substantial? I don't think there's any bigger change than what is going on over there right now. So, do I believe at the time, when they came up with the plan, and nothing against, I mean, they came up with a good idea, but things have changed substantially. They are clearly unanticipated, and it's growing, and I feel it meets the needs. So I, I'm just gonna tell you, I will support this on using, listening to your argument, the second going in that direction. That's how I would respond.
Commissioner, if I may, quickly.
Sure.
With that, I, I think those are, are good points. However, the planning commission didn't provide any of those. And so that's, that's us talking about this today, and so it's unclear what foundation the planning commission is making its recommendation upon. So that, that's the first thing. Two, two, again, to the point that, yes, there's commercially zoned districts being developed for commercial purposes, but there is also here an R4 zoned district being developed for residential purposes. And, and I, I agree that development is going on. However, to the degree it was unanticipated, I'm not sure. And then, and then three, it was said earlier that this is, you know, a parcel of only X amount of feet. And on either side, there are two grandfathered uses. And so for the argument of expansion of commercial activities, you know, I'm not sure what sort of commercial benefit you would have for the Mon General project specifically, because you're talking about a small piece of property. In, in other's words, I'm not sure, you know, how exactly small I would say it is. But, and, and then there's a, there's a chunk of machine shop in the middle. And that's, that's grandfathered use. And so, I think that's another problem with the expanding commercial activity argument. But again, I would just go back to, there are specific zones for a specific purpose.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see.
Okay?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else want to speak as in opposition to the request? Would you state your name and address, please?
I'm David Yoder. I own several companies in that area. The Alagany Development Corporation, and also Pine New Supply. Pine New Supply owns the hardware store building, or the business, but Alagany owns the building. I have several concerns because the road is narrow. The hospital had made public statements that they were planning on expanding the road. I see no reason for them to expand it now because they do not have an entrance on that section of road. They've closed off where they were temporarily using an access for the construction purposes. So, the commercial business on that side will increase traffic on a very, very narrow road. In the past, some of the builders, I had no part in it, but they actually went out into the road with their planter six and a half feet into the road right away with their, with their planter for a curb to, to let their parking come out that far. I was very much opposed to that, because I thought they should stay back off the road right away in their construction of their parking areas in the buildings. The, one of the other concerns I have is that the hospital owned that property over these years, and it's my understanding that hospitals are acceptable in our one area. I suppose Mr. Wood could object to that statement, but I, I've seen that in other areas. The, the hospital is creating a lot of vacancies in the area with those new buildings. We presently have in White Birch Towers and Pineview Drive, over 24,000 square feet of vacancies. In the Ace Building, we have 8,000 square feet of vacancy. And any more commercial space in there is not gonna help our conditions as far as the, the rental of our properties. And I remind the commission that in earlier days, the commission approved the TIF. I, I approved TIFs, but I was in opposition to them taking in all of our area. We owned most of that property, or did at one time, or developed it from the 705 Road at the Sheet Service Station, all the way to West Run. We had three properties we never owned. And so we developed that in, in a mixed use. It's my understanding too that in a, a C1 commercial area, you cannot have a mixed use such as apartments. There, again, I refer to Rich Wood to see if that's, that's correct. But 7% of our taxes go to the TIF, giving us direct opposition, you know, competition for the rental of our properties. So that, that's sort of a, a little thing that I still remember from taking all of our properties in, giving 7% of our taxes to the TIF that the hospital gets from. Now, I don't understand why...
Only with increases.
Only with increased value.
Yeah, only with increases.
Only with increased value.
Well, yes, yes.
Yes.
You're correct, absolutely. I misspoke on that. But since they're not going to use any of that section of Maple Drive for access, there's no way they can. They're putting retaining wall in there. Why would they have any interest in widening, widening the road? Since they already have a widened road with the new access that the TIF is paying for. So, the, we don't need any more hotspots. Of course, I didn't know, so I didn't know what, what's going to happen in this building, but it's commercial and they could...
That's inappropriate.
Presumably, well, maybe it's inappropriate, but I'm just telling you simply that there's a hotspot right across our parking lot already, and there's one down the road just a little way. So I, you know, if they want hotspots, that's fine, but I don't want them right next to me. So, the, the Garrison family had indicated at the hearing when it was changed to R4 that they were gonna sell this property to Mr. Connor, Dr. Connor. And so I, I supported the change because I thought apartments in the area were a lot less detrimental to, to the area, on the, on the road especially, than the commercial uses.
I don't, I don't know if anyone objected at that time. Do you recall? You were here.
I...
I don't think anyone was here to object to the change at that time, my recollection.
I don't remember.
There was...
You recall?
There was one group of townhome owners at the planning commission that objected. They basically didn't want any development there.
But there was no one here at that...
Before the county commission, I do not believe there was any...
There was no objections. Everyone was in agreement to the change. Okay, that, that's what my recollection.
Well, unless they widen that road, it's not suitable for more commercial property in the area. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next. In opposition, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Glenn LaRue, and I, the property crosses the street from where this proposed commercial, new commercial area is going to go. My, my thing, I think a picture tells so many words, depending on how you take the picture. But if, if we basically look at the, at the property as the, the way it is pre-existing to, to anything, Mr. Connor had his apartments this way. And there's, there's R4 on the other side, and this just closed it in, in the middle. Now, his, his change in this whole process is kind of indicative of, of things that happened in West Virginia before we had zoning, in that he has come and spent millions of dollars to build the R4 on the section of property in the middle of this per the zoning. So he has done properly what he applied for the zoning change, and it made it conform, because it's now all, except for this little piece in front, it's all R4. And his units are med center apartments. I mean, they're for mostly medical students. They're not WVU housing. So it's kind of a, a quiet med student area. My nephew actually lived there when he was in med school. So, he has now invested millions of dollars in this area that was to be R4 all the way down. Now we're proposing to pull the rug out from under that and make it a commercial. Commercial meaning no setbacks. So you've got now balconies and quiet student area, and we're gonna put a commercial area that will have zero setbacks. And we could have a garbage dumpster sitting right underneath these balconies on his property lot. And I think it's, you know, inconscionable to change that now that that area, and he invested his hard-earned money, his work, to make that area R4 with the idea and the legal notice from the, the zoning that whoever owned that front piece would be R4. So he has, he spent his money now. Now you're gonna, you know, they're proposing to come, and there's even, I was kind of shocked to hear the allegations of Mr. Bossio that, that Mr. Connor had, and, and Mr. Wood had conspired to, to take advantage of some lady that, at that time agreed, she agreed to this change, that it should all be R4. And he's making allegations that, that there was some, somehow this, somehow this lady was duped into agreeing to this zoning thing. I think that's outrageous. So this, it is a kind of a spot thing they're trying to do. Maple Drive is, is here. My building is, is right behind, which is an office.
One of these?
I haven't, uh...
Here.
You're across the street or you're behind?
I'm just trying to figure out which one's your...
Are you on the side street where the Ace Hardware is or the other side?
Uh, on this one that goes down.
How about the, how about this other picture?
Pardon?
How about that other picture? Does it show it?
No, I'm not in that picture.
Hands in the soul.
I'm in this picture.
You're in that picture?
Yeah.
Okay, which one?
On this side where the yellow car is. So the, I'm exactly directly, I'm the most closest...
Across the street.
Across the street, and we are C2, not C1, being that it's a neighborhood.
Oh, you're, you're the up, you're up, you're the building, you're the first building up there?
Yes.
Okay. You used to be the last building there before you got, got on the...
Right, right.
Okay, I know where you are.
So, I'm directly across the street from this, you know, proposed change. Now, my building is rented by, and it's on two levels, and it's rented by the WVU Center for Entrepreneurial Studies and Development on the top floor. And on the second floor, or on the bottom floor, is the Morgantown Pastoral Counseling Service, which they counsel, you know, people for various things. A large, a big number of which is, you know, gambling, substance abuse, and, and that kind of thing. And, and they too have approached me, and they're, were kind of upset of the possibility. This, this opens a can of worms to put your commercial across that street that, that I kind of agree that, I don't know how you're going to, whether the road is widened or not widened. If it's widened, it's going to encroach on that property, it's going to further reduce the size of this already small commercial area. And they're proposing, I guess, to pay a big price to this lady who's now thinking, "Well, maybe I should go for the money." This is all about the money, okay?
Isn't it all?
Yeah, well, that's what this zoning thing, and that's what we're supposed to be...
No, I, I agree with you.
Aren't we here to...
No, I agree with you, though. I agree with you.
So we're supposed to be here to preempt the...
Yes.
The Johnny Come-Latelys that, that come in and, and to the detriment of people that have already complied with the law on the zoning and all. And, and they've stepped up to the table. They've invested their money in a, a use for that area that is very pertinent to that area. The R4 is a med center being right there. I mean, you know how hard it is for med students to find a place that they can live? That's not a, a, a whoop-de-doo, you know, WVU party place? Well, this isn't. This is one place they can go. So it is a very necessary part of this whole area. And it's very consistent, because everybody on this side, everybody on this side, and everybody down the middle, except for this little strip in there. And that strip is gonna be a smaller area. It's gonna have to be something very lucrative to go in there to pay this big price. You know, and that hasn't come out, okay?
Can we wrap it up, please?
Yes, okay. So something pretty lucrative's gotta go in there. So I don't know. I mean, this opens a can of worms. It could be, I mean, I'm not saying, it could be a bar, a hotspot. It could be a strip club, and my people are not hobby...
Yeah, exotic.
Well, it's not within a 1,500 feet of any of your...
Yeah, it is. If there's 1,500 feet of apartments, that's, that's extraordinary.
Well, whatever. But anyway, it's gonna have to be something, and, and we're not hearing what it's gonna be. And, and I know my tenants who are pretty upset about the possibility of this being something other than what it was zoned for. And that's what it was zoned for. Mr. Connor has put his money on that. And I, and I don't think impugning Mr. Wood's integrity in this meeting is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'll just state your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Connor, and I have constructed the apartment buildings behind this property. Also, I own the property where the, I had 36 more units that I bought in 1990. So that area has pretty much all been R4. Now, in the very beginning, before I was in there, I had a contract. I was in negotiations with the bank on that property. I was in negotiations with the bank on that property when the zoning election occurred. So I followed all the appropriate steps, went down to the zoning board and they agreed and was very little opposition, as there said, there was none here, that the property, the best use of it was R four. And at that time, Mrs. Bland believed that was in her best interest to keep that R four. She thought that was the best return on her money at that time. Now, if you go to C one, there is no setback requirement in C one. So they can build right up to that property line, which then also they could apply down the road for a conditional use. Once it's granted C one, you can always apply for a conditional use. And who knows where that might go? Now, gentlemen, I'm paying probably 50 grand a year there in property taxes. I run a nice, clean operation. There's never, uh, I, I rent to a lot of medical people, nurses, uh, residents, and I am, I'm speaking in opposition to the change. If we're going to change it every other year, why are we having zoning? And you, it was changed in 211, it was reaffirmed in 213, and now all of a sudden, a year later, you want to switch it again. There has to be some consistency and something that developers and people that come in complain on. So my appeal to you is leave the zoning the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in opposition? And no further comments? Uh, I have a motion closing here.
Close the public hearing, second.
I have a motion and a second. Close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I, I have one question and either of Mr. Bossio, if you could explain. How close is this property he's talking about compared to your apartments back?
Well, the one thing I've been hearing, and I think Lisa can speak to this, is that they could build to the property line. Couple of things there. Again, as I mentioned earlier, they would have to go before the planning board again for anything they would, they would build there. It's not going to be a hotspot. It's not going to be a strip joint. You really ought to know your laws before you make those kind of allegations.
Okay, we don't want to, yeah.
So, so, um, to answer your question, okay, uh, there are, uh, in, in place in the zoning in a, in a C one district, setbacks, okay? Green space. And, and above and beyond all that, okay, a, a smart developer, okay? Now, we're talking about Mr. Conner and his, and his millions of dollars. How about the Gabriel brothers and their thousands of employees and the tax dollars that they brought to this county? This is Paul Gabriel, okay? He's not going to build a hotspot. He's not going to build a bar. He will do it and do it correctly because from the standpoint of building, there are ratios. There's parking ratios. He's not going to want to build something with no trees or anything like that, like some things that are being built right now. So they'll be covered, uh, e- everything that needs to be done will be done according to the way it should be done. And Lisa, you can speak to that. I think in, in.
You know, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but the public hearing is closed.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to question.
This is a watered on.
No, no, I just need to ask a question. How close?
Why don't you ask, why don't you ask Rich for?
Rich, can you give an explanation of how close the back of this property is compared to where there's apartment, the apartments are? Because the way I'm hearing it, they're saying it's budding right next to it. Is that correct or not?
There has to, well.
Yeah, yes or no? Is it, is it a budding next to it or not?
The lot is a budding, the lot that's being developed.
Yes. Okay.
Is that the question you have?
Yes. There would be a budding next to his property.
Correct.
But you got to ask your second question. Is there setbacks or not? One set.
Okay, is there a setback?
Yes, there are. The, the setbacks under C one are less than under R four, but there are setbacks in screening requirements.
Okay.
This, you had this.
Okay, I know. I've been looking back and forth.
Rich, are these the current facts about my question?
You know, I, I just, the question I think for the commission is, one, is, you know, do we uphold the planning commission's decision, which was to approve it? Uh, second of all, uh, if we don't, then why are we not doing that? If we do, uh, they obviously, uh, felt that it should be approved. The other question I think that it enters into making this decision is, is it's obvious that this area is mixed. It's, it's not a pure, uh, residential or pure commercial. Uh, and, and, and I go back to Eldon's, uh, comment about Mr. Gabriel in terms of buying property first and, and then coming in and trying to get a change. Uh, but he didn't do that. And I think you have to look at the intentions and I think there's points well made about the developer in this case. Uh, if we look at the past history of that developer, uh, I think everything that he's done in this area has been up and up and above board. And he's been an asset to this community. Uh, also in terms of economic development, if, if it's going to be commercial and if it's going to contribute, the tax, the tax on the property is going to go up. Now, is it going to interfere? The road is certainly a consideration. The road will be a consideration whether something gets built there or not. It's a consideration now. Uh, there are some, some important considerations, but one would have to believe that Mr. Gabriel would also be faced with those same considerations if he decides to do something with this property. And they're going to have to be addressed. Uh, so I think he's going to share in those concerns and issues, uh, whenever he decides whatever he would do with this property. But, uh, since I'm the president, I can't make a motion. All I can do is open the floor to a motion, uh, whether you, uh, want to approve or disapprove this.
The, the substantial change and un- unanticipated change was the expansion of Maple Drive. If, if I recollect and I, I guess other than the staff, Mr. Conner probably was the only, well, maybe Mr. Gabriel were the only one here when this change was made back when we heard this case before. And my recollection is the condition of the road at the time entered into it at that point. My understanding that what we recently approved with the Mont General TIF is that there will be a major, uh, major change and expansion of this Maple Drive, which creates the substantial cha- unanticipated change. But now there's, now there's assertions that they're not going to make the expansion. In other words, if, this is, this is, this is my dilemma. If they are going to expand and open that area up like it was presented to us for appro- approval of this Maple Drive, then it creates the basis by which to change this to C one. But if, as Mr. Yoder says, and I know he's very aware as well and sure the other, others are, the things that, that they are not going to, to expand Maple Drive up there, I thought they were. So I'm in a dilemma. I don't know which way I'm going to vote because it all revolves around the Maple Drive. Because I, I agree that, that, that in our prior discussions, that was an issue. The condition of the road would not support additional commercial development. Uh, now, now, now we're looking at it in reverse and I, I, I understand. Rich, do you, I guess that's a little bit why I asked those earlier questions. I mean, do you have anything more on, on the Maple Drive TIF development? Not that you would, but I'd just ask you if you do.
No, I, I have, um, had discussions with an engineer who's working on that, but that, that's nothing that makes it official from DOH or the plans have been issued or that they're ready to go to contract. Um, and of course, since it's essentially a state highway, they wouldn't come before us for a permit or something like that. So.
Why not?
I tend to find out in the paper just like everybody else.
I understand the palmetics and reverse is coming up here specifically to look at those issues. Uh, o- other issues, but Maple Drive was one of them, is what I was told. Creates a dilemma. I don't know how to resolve it.
Well, first of all, we don't, do we have a motion? That leaves you, Tom. Are you inclined to make a motion? I can't make a motion.
I understand.
And Eldon is, uh.
Confused.
Confused.
Well, I mean, after hearing the whole argument, you know, and as, I think you put it very well, are we here to support the planning commission and what they decided or not supporting? And using the three avenues that I said, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't support what the planning commission stated. So I'm going to move that we, uh, change from R four to the C one and support the planning commissions for discussion.
Are you still undecided?
Who we have said.
Yeah, that's what you could, you know, some way, some way to find out for sure about. I'll end it all. Second motion. We have a motion in the second.
Now we get this, I'd like.
For approval.
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, the, uh, motion passed, uh, two to one. That, uh.
With that being said, could we ask you to see where they are on, see if you can find out anything about the, I think that is a key issue, no matter what is done or not done. Because I think that's key and also going up to the WVU Research Center, that has, that road has to be widened.
Yeah, well, I, I want to make it clear and I, I don't think Sam, Sam knows me well enough, that, uh, it has nothing to do with my faith and belief in, in Mr. Gabriel. But I, I, I do recall the road being an issue when we changed it to R four and, and I have not, I, I don't have enough information to know that that complexion of that road is going to change. And Mr. Yoder said it isn't, so I'm going to.
Oh, if I might speak.
Yes, you may.
Regardless of whether it's going to be residential apartment or commercial.
The road has to be.
The road, the road has to be addressed.
Yes.
Whether it's just improved.
Yep.
Well, true, commercial, commercial is going to create a different level of traffic usage than, than.
Actually, I beg to differ. Okay? Uh, the, the commercial, because of the size of the property, isn't going to be as, uh, dense as one of those apartment buildings. And.
Oh, yeah, because it's R four. I was thinking of the single house that was there.
Right.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so, so the, the road's going to be an issue. Your brothers.
Okay. Do we need a motion? Oh.
We heard our, we heard our, we're done with that. Uh, I, I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, if you can find out anything.
I have no, I have no direct way of doing this. I can follow up to the LA and whatnot, but.
If you can find out anything.
Kind of way.
I appreciate that.
We need a motion from out of the public hearing.
No, we've already done.
We already did that.
We did that and we go there for it. So we're now.
Okay, did the motion on.
Uh, now, uh, Tom, I think.
Yeah, me.
Do you have a motion?
Move to go and execute a session pursuant six dash nine, eight dash four, four B, section nine, under commercial competition.
No.
Second. I have a motion in the second, uh, go and execute a session, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I would ask that everybody in the room, except for the staff of the mission.
Right, right. They have to have that.
We're back in session. Okay.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're out of executive session.
Move adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion that we adjourned. Now I have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're adjourned.